Everyone, and welcome to the caucus meeting of Monday, May 9. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Before we do the pledge, as I call your name, would you please indicate that you are present? Councilmember Cunningham.
Present and in person.
Councilmember Dawson.
Here.
Councilmember Flewelling.
Here.
Councilmember Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Hervishon. Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Martha Lawson here.
Councilmember McAllen.
Here.
Councilmember Rodman.
Here.
Councilmember Somerville.
Here.
The chair is present. Ten members of county council are accounted for at this meeting to conduct the business. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please? Mr. McAllen, do you wish to lead us?
Yes, certainly. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Will a member of council please make a motion to approve this evening's agenda for caucus?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Mr. Rodman makes the motion. Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Dooley motioned in second. Is there any discussion about tonight's agenda? Seeing none, the caucus agenda will be approved without objection, and there are no objections. Next item is our agenda review. If you will take a look at the council meeting of this evening, you will see that it is rather short, which means that we may be able to get out in a timely fashion. Not trying to jinx anyone. Let the record state that Mr. Hervishon is now present, so all 11 members are there. Are there any questions regarding any portion of the consent agenda? Mr. Glover.
You said a consent?
Well, any part of the agenda.
Item number 17.
Item number 17, yes.
The widow, unless there's objection to passing this, I'd like for it to be moved up, if possible, to probably right after number eight. And the widow will be here, and I would hate for her to stay here till the end of the meeting, if that's possible.
Okay, well, we can do that, but it is an action item, so we'll have to move it after number 10.
Number 10.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions regarding this? Okay, seeing none, that takes care of the agenda. Council, did I hear someone say something?
Mr. McAllen.
Mr. McAllen, I'm getting a little trouble with my mute button. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Yeah, this is a proclamation that I'll be reading tonight as part of the agenda. And ancillary to that, I would like to just add some information that tomorrow is directly related to the proclamation of the emergency medical service. Tomorrow is Tuesday May 10th, and designated National Fentanyl Awareness Day. And now they situation here in the state where we are operating at 22, on average, 22 people per 100,000 who are dealing with this issue. And we have a report in the top 10 counties. Fortunately for us, Beaufort County is not in the top 10, but some of our neighbors are at 68 out of 100,000. And it's obvious to me that this fentanyl problem is a big one statewide, and I want to just add that that is another reason for us to be proclaiming Emergency Medical Services Week, May 15th to May 21st, because our emergency medical service technicians are the first of the first responders to deal with this matter as it relates to drug overdoses. So I'd like to just tie those two things together, make everyone aware of National Fentanyl Awareness Day, and congratulate the emergency medical technicians for their ability to keep us out of the top 10.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
We're on discussion now?
Yes, we are.
Just a couple of things. Public facilities, we will be taking up the recommendations from the Transportation Committee, and I think we're targeting that for about four o'clock, and I think that'll be of interest to a lot of the community, so we'll see where that goes. Secondly, you know, about two months ago, we had some discussions about physical autonomy for the school board, and they, on more than one occasion and fairly recently, have lobbied the delegation for full autonomy, and the delegation keeps telling them that that's a no-go. So as it stands right now, we would do it this year just the way we've always done it, and I would guess there may be some discussion later on with the school board about whether they want to do something in a limited fashion, but that would not be the case. And lastly, one of just a personal piece, I was highly criticized by one of our former members relative to the transportation stuff, so I copied you on the response on that. I don't think I was doing anything wrong, but if I am, I'm always open to criticism. So that was all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'd say as I copied everybody on that.
Okay, Mr. Dawson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like for us to take a moment, and I'm not sure when is the appropriate time, whether it's now or at a future meeting, but we as a council and our administrator, we need to sit down and talk about the town of Yemecy and their annexation blitz that they're currently doing, trying to move into Beaufort County, taking up as much property as they can. We have a situation where the last annexation piece that they did was the Cotton Hall Plantation and the Tomahawk Plantation. And at one of our Northern Regional Plan meetings, might have been a month before that, Matt Gons, the town, is he the manager? I think he's the town manager. Yeah, Matt Gons made the statement that the town's intention is to annex as far as Highway 17 and Gordon's Corner. I don't know if we want to open that discussion here now, or you want to schedule another meeting and us do it at another time, but I got some comments I want to make and see if by chance I can get some support from council as to my thoughts on it.
Okay. I would think that that would be appropriate for us to discuss at the executive, the next executive committee meeting. Are you amenable to that, Mr. Somerville? You're on mute still. You're still on mute, Paul.
I think, I understood, Mr. Dawson, that he wants to talk about growth boundaries and annexations, and Yemecy is one of, you've got Yemecy growing and expanding, you've got Hardyville going and expanding, you've got Bluffton going and expanding, you've got Beaufort and Port Royal growing and expanding. I mean, if you're going to have the discussion, there's a whole lot to talk about, I'm not sure what we can do about it, but I have to think about it. That's a big topic. That's a big topic, so I'll give that some thought.
Okay. I know. Ms. Howard.
Yes, today we had a very short but very productive meeting with Safe Harbor and the Town of Port Royal and Beaufort County regarding the sands, and things are going forward in a very positive manner. And the good news is, it will stay open, the boat landing, no matter what.
Excellent.
Unless the administrator has anything to add to that.
No, I just want to make it clear to council so that you all know, we do not, from a county administration level, have any plans or have given any instructions or anything to shut down any boat landings. We are going to keep those open. Of course, we have to put dates and letters so that we can initiate discussions, and we're confident that we're going to work with Port Royal and the Safe Harbor folks to resolve that issue. So the article in the paper was a little bit sensational and did not convey the situation accurately, so.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent.
When Lad Howe was here a couple of weeks ago and spoke to us, you know, he made the point that if we are maintaining something over a long period of time, we can claim that.
We can.
Is our plan to do that for this particular one?
Our plan, and so with regard to, and this is more of a legal question, but I'm going to take a shot at it, in order to establish the right to a prescriptive easement, you have to do that in court. We're trying to avoid court, and we're trying to work with all of the individuals who hold these ownership things to get either maintenance agreements or get the property in the county name so that we don't have to do that. But I wanted you all to be clear that it is not my direction to staff or my intention, and I do not agree with the talk that we're going to shut down boat landings and we're going to stop doing maintenance on boat landings, or that we're going to give boat landings away. We're not planning to do that.
I agree with that.
Yeah, Mr. Glover. Anyway, let me make sure I understand clearly, there are some legal ownership questions about boat landings, and as far as maintenance of those boat landings, and there are several, I think there were five that had questions about legality. What's going to happen to those boat landings? I know the sands is a very popular one, but there are some other boat landings out in the area that need some work on as well, but they are not owned by the quote-unquote the county legally.
And I've recently instructed the staff that we are going to repair any boat landings that have damage, that we're going to maintain boat landings that we have historically maintained. We're going to continue to do those things and keep those landings open and operable and do what we need to do to make them usable in the meantime. And if there's a funding shortfall on it, they need to let me know so that I can find the money to give to them so we can put those back right. That direction to stop doing repair work to boat landings did not come from administration. That came from something outside of administration. Don't want to make a big issue out of that, but I have now corrected that direction.
Let me just also add to that is that when we did Whitehall Boat Landing, it almost became the standard. Just throw that out there.
Yeah, I agree. And we have, we're working on a plan with Mr. Williams to make sure all of our boat landings are up to that standard over the next few years.
Thank you, Senator. Anyone else? Good lively discussion.
Yeah, may I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Somerville.
Now that I'm off mute, we're going to make, well, we already have made some pretty serious decisions on an impact fee, and we're going to make another pretty serious one in the first meeting in June. So I think that the more we talk about it, especially in public, the better. I just want to make a couple of comments, if I may. With respect to the school impact fee, I understand the reasons why. The vast majority of council members voted to terminate it, but I hope, under the statute, we had to create the impact fee. The school district doesn't have the authority, so we did it on their behalf, and it became essentially their impact fee. It just became a question of how it gets collected, and of course, that's when we bogged, one of the ways we bogged down. I'm hoping at some point, sooner rather than later, we can resurrect that, but when we do, if we do, obviously, I don't want it to become a burden for the administrator. I think, I know, I went, I attended some of the meetings in Bluffton and some of the other places, and I know the administrator carried a lion's share of the load, and I applaud him for that, and he worked very hard, but I don't think it should be his responsibility if it comes up again. So hopefully, I think the school district has made it clear that they would like to pursue it, and it makes sense because if we don't have a school impact fee, that means that it has to go on their referendum, it has to be borrowed, and the cost gets socialized, and a dollar becomes $2 over the life of the amortization of the bonds, and those that create the impacts are getting off pretty cheap because they don't have to pay for that initial surgery impact. So there are a lot of reasons why I think it's a great idea to have a school impact fee, and at one time, majority of council agreed with that. A lot of things have happened since then, which I understand. I'm just hoping that we'll, that council will keep an open mind to the possibility of resurrecting that at some point, sooner rather than later. With respect to the other impact fees, non-school impact fees, there's so much going on there. There's some things that are very troubling to me about the way they're currently being administered. I think there's some things, specifically the quote-unquote administrative fee, I think that, I think that there's a real question of the legality of that. There's a real question of the legality of the way human head retains their, I think, their parks and recreation. I'm not sure what else they retain, but I'm not sure, I think that raises serious questions about the legality of that. So whatever happens, there's a lot of cleaning up that's going to have to be done if we continue that, and I hope we do, because again, when you don't, you're socializing a cost that, in my view, should at least be partially paid by the folks that create the impact. Anyway, I'm always happy to hear any comments, pro or con, but I just hate to say nothing about it, then you come to the first meeting in June and raise your hands to kill it or not kill it, so I think that's why I want to make the comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rodman?
Yeah, just one thing that came up, that somebody pointed out to me, which I thought was very interesting when we were talking about the school board or the school impact fee, which I had not thought about and we didn't include in our discussion, but actually, if you have an impact fee for the schools, I think it makes it more difficult to pass a referendum because the voting public say, well, we approved an impact fee. Why do you need a referendum? And so actually, it may be counterproductive to have one of those, and it was pointed out, you raise a small amount of money compared to what you really need for the schools. But I thought that was an interesting observation that somebody passed along to me.
Yeah, Mr. Cunningham.
I just have more of a question. A couple, about a month ago, we had a couple developers come in wanting to rezone property outside of Mainland Bluff. I know it gained a lot of attention, it ended up in the papers, my email blew up, and we have not heard a peep about it since. So I was just curious to see, is that still trying to be pushed behind the scenes? Is that still going to be brought back to council, or where are we sitting with that?
We had a meeting with Mainland Bluff on Friday with regards to their annual review on their development agreement, and the developer was in there, and they're working, they're still, the folks that are requesting that rezoning are still working through items to see which direction they want to go. There are some things in the development agreement that they're going to have to have addressed that may impact their ability to come back, but they're still working through all of that.
Thank you.
And if I could go back to the Yemecy annexation, there is several initiatives that our Planning Department, the Planning and Zoning Department is working on with regards to growth boundaries with the Town of Hardyville and the Town of Yemecy. So it might be more appropriate if you would allow me to instruct our Planning Director, Mr. Merchant, to add that item to the Natural Resources Committee agenda, to give you all an overview of that so that you all will have an opportunity at the appropriate committee to discuss that item at the next Natural Resources Committee meeting. It's the same day as the Executive Committee, so it doesn't really matter, but I think it would be more appropriate to be in front of Natural Resources.
Ms. Howard, would you make that a part of your next meeting then?
Sure.
Excellent, okay.
That'll be great. Mr. Chairman, just a brief question about the 278 committee, I'm sorry, 278 project fair game at this meeting.
Sure.
I have a question with this throughput study that we have and the extension that has been talked about. We asked for a design exception for the traffic signal at Windmill Harbor. Is that going to stand independent of all of the other activities that are taking place? The design exception request for traffic law.
Mr. Greenway will answer that.
So let me make sure I understand the question. Are you asking me if the delay on the study of 278 is going to hold up and delay the installation of the traffic signal at Windmill Harbor?
Well, that's a good way to put it.
Yeah, no. We're drafting a letter right now to the Secretary of Transportation, Kristi Hall, to request that design exception, and stating that because of the additional delay to the 278 project, we need to go ahead and be approved to install the signal at Windmill Harbor.
Well, that certainly answered it. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Administrator, I appreciate your forthright answer.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Flewelling.
Thank you. Since you're up there, Mr. Greenway, I'm wondering if you could discuss the personal data breach that Board of Registration elections had for poll worker information.
Is this the one that occurred several weeks ago?
Well, we just got the email about it, we just got the letter about it at home. No, it's probably the one that happened a couple of weeks ago. I haven't heard anything about it, and I'm wondering if the issue has been resolved, if everything that can be done to safeguard data has taken place.
Yeah, I will briefly address this here, and I may need to clarify some things in my administrator's report at 6:00 because I may misstate the situation, but that data breach occurred with a vendor that we employ here in Beaufort County for voters' registration. It was not anything local that happened with our department. It was a data breach through a vendor that happened outside of that, but it's my understanding everything has been resolved, and if I need to clarify that or add more information to that, I will do so at 6:00 with my administrator's report.
Okay, well, you know, I don't know that you'll need to clarify anything, except I would like you to make sure and verify that everything has been resolved.
Yeah, I will.
That there is no further security issue for our data, for our volunteers' data, actually, our employees' data. It was regarding poll workers and their pay. Their personal data was found on the internet. And make sure that not only no further breaches are necessary, but everybody that may have been involved has also been identified and notified.
Yeah, we'll have that, I'll have those details for you at 6:00.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, another question on voter registration.
Go ahead.
I have liaison for that, your services. When I thought we had an understanding that the Riverbend Lodge was going to be made available for advanced voting and for voting in the primary and the general election, has anything happened to dispose of that idea so that Riverbend Lodge will not be used?
That I'm not aware of. I know that I did speak, because that is my district right now. I know that I was in conversation with the Board of Elections, and they were very sincere about using that as a polling place for the primary and general election, especially since Sun City is now split into two districts, and there's, you know, some 2,100 homes that would be affected by this change. So that I don't know.
Yeah, we'll have an answer for you all on that. Yeah, we'll have an answer for you all on that at 6:00 as part of my administrator's report as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I just have one more for Board of Voter Registration. Are we moving forward with our plan, Mr. Administrator, with regards to the MyPillow Warehouse, the storage of the voting machines?
The list has been forwarded to the appropriate personnel, and I'm waiting on cost and timeframes to do that work. So yes, sir.
Excellent, because I think that's a great place to store that material. And thank you very much for arranging and suggesting that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any others? Mr. Harvishan, you're quiet. You don't have any questions?
Nothing for me at the moment. Thank you.
All right. Then seeing no further action to be taken, we will adjourn the caucus meeting and resume county council meeting at 6:00 P.M.
... Council meeting of Monday, May 9 to order. This is a hybrid meeting, which means we do have council members in person as well as online, as I call the role. Will you please indicate that you are present? Councilmember Cunningham.
Present.
Councilmember Dawson.
Present.
Councilmember Flueheling.
I'm here.
Councilmember Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Harvishon.
Present.
Councilmember Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Mark Lawson here.
Councilmember McKellen.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Rodman.
Here.
Councilmember Somerville.
Present.
And the chair, Joe Passamian, is present. Therefore, we do have all 11 members to conduct the business of county council. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance and then please remain standing. Mr. McKellen will lead us in the pledge and do the invocation. Mr. McKellen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the highest and loving God, we thank you for your many and abundant blessings. We thank you for life itself and for the measure of health given us to fulfill our duties. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing serious responsibilities. I ask that we as a body promote peace, order, and justice, and that you graciously grant this assembled body wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, to have a sense of the true needs of our citizens, to have a keen thirst for justice, to understand and to clearly see what is good, fitting, and appropriate, to have the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and to have personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. Finally, please help us to ensure our deliberations here tonight benefit those who live and work in our extended community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would first ask a member of county council to amend tonight's agenda to move item number 17 up to the first item as we begin to conduct public hearings and action items. May I --
The motion.
Mr. Glover makes the motion to move that item.
Council meeting of Monday, May 9th to order. This is a hybrid meeting, which means we do have council members in person as well as online, as I call the role. Will you please indicate that you are present? Councilmember Cunningham.
Present.
Councilmember Dawson.
Present.
Councilmember Flueeling.
I'm here.
Councilmember Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Harvishon.
Present.
Councilmember Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Mark Lawson here.
Councilmember McKellen.
Here.
Councilmember Rodman.
Here.
Councilmember Somerville.
Present.
And the Chair, Joe Passamont, is present. Therefore, we do have all 11 members to conduct the business of County Council. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then please remain standing? Mr. McKellen will lead us in the pledge and do the invocation. Mr. McKellen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In God, who is gracious and loving, we thank you for your many and abundant blessings. We thank you for life itself and for the measure of health given us to fulfill our duties. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing serious responsibilities. I ask that we, as a body, promote peace, order, and justice, and that you graciously grant this assembled body wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, to have a sense of the true needs of our citizens, have a keen thirst for justice, to understand and to clearly see what is good, fitting, and appropriate, to have the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and to have personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. Finally, please help us to ensure our deliberations here tonight benefit those who live and work in our extended community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would first ask a member of County Council to amend tonight's agenda to move item number 17 up to the first item as we begin to conduct public hearings and action items. May I?
No moves, Jim.
Mr. Glover makes the motion to move that item.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson made the second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, this will be done without objection. The agenda is now amended, therefore I ask a member of Council to approve the agenda as amended.
No move.
Mr. Dawson makes the motion, and Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Duly motioned and second, any discussion? Seeing none, the agenda as amended is approved without objection. Next is the approval of the minutes of March 28th, 2022. May I have such a motion?
No moves, Mr. Jim.
Mr. Rodman makes the motion.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Any questions regarding the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved without objection. Next item is our administrator's report. Mr. Greenway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These next few items that we're going to do are very important to recognize, some people that have given their service to the county, and we're going to go over some things that you all asked me about during caucus. And in addition to that, finally Dale Butts will come up to talk about some things that we're doing in the Register of Deeds office to provide a better public service to the citizens of the county. Our first item tonight is to introduce employees. Our first employee works in our assessor's office. Her name is Jennifer Conte. She is an exemption specialist. And if you do not know what an exemption specialist does, you are familiar with it because you get a lot of emails about them because of the fact that they decide whether or not someone pays 6% or 4%. So you all probably have received some emails from some of their work or folks having questions or concerns about their work. So she assists taxpayers with their legal residence application process. She does the researches, research, she does the review, and she approves the legal residence exemption application. That's an important job for us. It's a controversial job. It's a thankless job for them. It's important for us and the school district so that we can make sure that we know that the revenue coming in is appropriately taxed, so we don't have to do refunds and things like that. Ms. Conte is a New Jersey native. She worked for many years in corporate America before moving to South Carolina and then joining the assessor's office. She's been with the assessor's office for five and a half years. She enjoys helping the taxpayers with their questions and challenges and learning about more, learning more about Beaufort County and the Low Country from a unique perspective. So it's, I guess our chairman can testify to the fact of how, how unique coming from New Jersey is to move into the Low Country. So let's give Ms. Conte a round of applause. I'm going to skip over one employee, somebody that's supposed to be here in person. They have not arrived yet, and then I'll go to them. Our second employee is an employee that works in our Board of Voter Registration and Elections Office here in Beaufort County. Her name is Tanya Harris. She's been with us for 16 years. She is a voter registration and election specialist. She does a lot of things. She maintains the department's account, payable records, along with maintaining and organizing the poll worker supplies for 95 precincts and nine board members. She played an instrumental role in this year's redistributing process by ensuring that the voter registration record for every voter in the county was updated with the new district information before the March 16th Canada filing period. That meant every street in Beaufort County had to be updated to reflect the new district changes within a two-week window. Tanya holds a bachelor's and master's degree in business administration. She is also the proud mother of two teenage sons, and many of you may not know this, but she's also the daughter of the person that takes care of me every day, Ms. Cheryl Harris, who is the matriarch of the county administration. So she takes good care of me. So anyway, Cheryl did a great job raising Tanya, and let's give Tanya a round of applause. How are you? So Shiree Growing is in our Building and Inspections Department. She is a Commercial Plans Examiner, and she's been with us for five years. Of course, she does review of commercial plans, and she performs commercial and residential inspections as needed. This is very interesting. I didn't know they did this. What's unique about you, you crochet wildlife nests for use during rehabilitation of injured animals, and in addition, she loves all animals. You were not here earlier, so I'm going to put you on this, and that's okay, but I'm going to give you a few moments at the mic here if you want to say anything. If you don't want to say anything, that's all right as well. So anyway, so come right here if you want to say a few words.
Beaufort County is a really nice place to work. My bosses have been amazing and very much mentors to me. I'm glad that you guys gave me the opportunity to work here, and I really hope to continue to do so.
You do a great job for us.
Thank you very much.
So anyway, thank you. Let's give her a round of applause. So two items from earlier this evening, the data breach that occurred back in the month of February. We did some work on that in between caucus and the council meeting. Apparently what had happened there is the vendor that handles our precinct poll worker applications, there was a data breach there. SLED was involved immediately. Their investigation is still ongoing. We do not think any, the only data that we have confirmed that has been released publicly is for two workers, but in response to that, credit monitoring services are being offered to all of those workers by Experian for a year to make sure that if anything does get out, they're notified of that immediately. So Councilmember Flueeling had requested that earlier. I hope he heard that, but that's the update on that.
I did. Thank you, Eric.
Investigation, that's still ongoing. With regards to the Riverbend Lodge, apparently there was an email sent out a few weeks ago with a letter about using that for voter registration or voter place, and there was no follow-up on that. So currently, all of those folks are being told to go to the, would be told to go to the Church of the Palms, but we will follow up on this tomorrow. We have the correct contact information now to get that, to try to correct that. And Audra in our ACA that oversees and works for voter registration office will be handling that tomorrow to see if we can correct that for Councilmember McKellen, who asked that question during caucus. So the final thing that I have this evening, I might say Dale Butts to come up. He's going to update you on the new services that we're offering through our Register of Deeds office that gives folks some more security about what might be happening with the property transactions. And then that will conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenway. Good evening, Council. You'll probably remember that was about a year ago that our Property Fraud Alert System went live in the Register of Deeds office. That is a free subscription service provided to our citizens where they can sign up for alerts anytime that there is a transaction involving their property. So most of the time, they're going to be aware of any transaction, but they'll get an email regardless, and it's those times that, of course, you're not aware that you're going to want to react. And so this is just a service that we provide for the property owners in our county in the event that there were to be some kind of fraud situation that gives you a chance to know about it quickly and contact the authorities. Since we went live on April 16th of 2021, there have been 1,942 users sign up for the service. And of course, as we said, it, there's not, not anything that the deeds office would, would do in the way of any action. It would be up to you to, to contact whom you needed to contact, but at least it does let, let you know that there's something out there that maybe you're not aware of. In addition to that, you might have heard us talking about some action that the Register of Deeds and the Assessor's Office jointly were taking here within the last few weeks. That is, just as a piggyback on this system where they are now contacting the seller when, when there's a deed comes across the counter not prepared by an attorney. That's just a proactive move on their part to make sure that that seller indeed is conveying that property and someone's not presenting a fraudulent document to them. So that's just another, and kudos to, to the Assessor's Office and the Register of Deeds for coming up with, with that process. Anybody have any questions on that? Since it was about a year ago, we thought it appropriate to give you a little bit of an update on how that's being used, so that's what we're going to do. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think, you know, most of us kind of become aware of this because of ads on TV about people losing their homes. And I like what you're doing. I guess one question would be on the second one that you described, where it, it only is done if there's not an attorney doing it. Is there any logical reason not to do it for just everybody in Beaufort County? Because it would seem like that would be a failsafe thing that would protect some people.
I think it's just sheer volume on their part because, because the other subscription service is, is in place, and because you are supposed to have an attorney to prepare your, your deed in South Carolina, and you still get those that are quote unquote homemade deeds that might come in, and that could be the highest, could be the highest percentage of potential fraud, those that are not done by an attorney. So that was the reasoning in going that route. Now, there's two steps there. So they, they file the deed in the Register of Deeds office. It's the Assessor's Office who does the official transfer for tax purposes. That's where it would stop in, in the event that the seller says, no, I have no knowledge of that. It would be the transfer portion that you would cut it off and return that, you know, that document and then let them know that you have potentially been the victim of fraud, you know.
So how do you go about verifying that somebody that says they're an attorney is really an attorney?
They don't verify that, but part of our ordinance in Beaufort County is that any deed has a prep clause on it that says prepared by so-and-so attorney at law, or it doesn't have, whoever's prepared by is supposed to be on there. So if it's just prepared by Dale Butts, then obviously I'm not an attorney.
The only ones that are not notified is if it is done by an attorney.
Right.
And you do the best you can to make sure there's.
Yeah. Yeah, and this is a very hot button issue around the country right now. We've been very fortunate here in Beaufort County not to have too many incidents like this that we're aware of anyway, but that's the reason you saw, you would see a lot of those radio and TV ads about fraud alert. There, again, they're trying to sell you something, you know? We can provide it for you for free here, the same thing, and that's what we've done. And we thank the Council for allowing us to do that a year ago. And as you can see, with almost 2,000 users signed up, it's been pretty successful to this point.
Joe, let me, so I'll put you on the spot, Dale. How do they sign up? Because I just went to the website trying to see where it is and do, because you have to sign up to be able to.
You do. You have to sign up. It's not an automatic thing. So if you go to the Register of Deeds page, right in the center of the, of the first page, you're going to see a big blue box that says, sign up here or register here, or something like that, and Sarah's got it right there. Property fraud alert now available. Or you can go to one of the resource links on the right-hand side and also click on it and just follow the instructions. That's all there is to it.
It's a great program, and it is a big thing that's going right now. Question though, is this something that we could also use the same technology when we talk about rezoning? Because we've had instances come to County Council where people say, I didn't realize my, my property was rezoned. I didn't know. Is there something we could do the same type of technology where people can put their property in there, especially when it comes to commercial or undeveloped, so that there is that form of notification? So people don't come to us five years, six years down the road saying, oh, I didn't know. We can't tell if they did or didn't. Is there something like that we could do as well?
Well, it is software specific, so I won't speak for the zoning office, but I'm not sure what, what their software vendor might offer, but, but this is through the, the company that does our real property software, New Vision Systems. So they provided this, and there very well may be something there resulting. I just don't know the answer.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll be glad to look into that. It's probably something we'd have to do to our GIS office that whenever a rezoning or our property zoning code is changed, that we would set that up to have an email sent to the property owner so that they'll know that an actual change has occurred. But we, we can look into that, and I'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The next two items are proclamations that will be read by Mr. McKellen. So item number seven is a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 15th through May 21st as Emergency Medical Services Week. Mr. McKellen.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yep. Okay. There are members of the Emergency Medical Services Group that will be coming to.
Yeah, I was going to ask them to come forward. And Eric, can you come, promote the reading if we could? Yeah, okay, great. Okay, have it there, great, okay. I'll wait for everyone to get assembled. Thank you all for coming. I'm very happy to, to read this proclamation in your honor tonight. Whereas Beaufort County is fortunate in having a highly trained and well-equipped emergency medical service, and whereas this emergency medical service is staffed by professional and experienced emergency medical technicians and paramedics who are on call day and night, and whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care for medical improves the survival and recovery rate for those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved, if Beaufort County Council proclaims, May 15th to May 21st, Emergency Medical Services Week, and we honor you for your dedication and your service. I have something I would like to say connected to this. I know you do a lot of responsive work to people who have trouble with overdoses. Tomorrow, Tuesday, May 10th, is designated as National Fentanyl Awareness Day, and I know that you come in contact with that often in the services that you provide. State of South Carolina is somewhat of a crisis in that regard. There are 22, on average, 22, 22 deaths per 100,000 statewide because fentanyl is 50 times stronger than heroin and 100 times stronger than morphine. And on occasion, people are mixing this drug with other drugs, thinking the drug they are taking is somewhat safe, and they're unaware of the presence of the fentanyl, which can cause a fatality just by taking a small amount. There are 10 counties in the state that have a higher fentanyl overdose death rate of 22 per 100,000. McCormick and Charleston and Keyshore have in the 30s. Georgetown, Greenwood, Corry County, Lancaster, Lawrence, and Dillon all have rates in the 40s, and our, for Jasper County, they actually have 68 per 100,000. So in our neighborhood, we have a real problem. But you notice we don't have that problem in Beaufort County. We're not in the top 10, and I think that is directly attributable to the first, of the first responders who arrive on the scene, which is you, in cooperation with the Bureau of Alcohol and Drug Abuse in the county, and certainly in cooperation with the services provided by the Sheriff's Department. But I know that your efforts are singular in preventing overdose deaths in this county, and I want to congratulate you for the extraordinary work you do in that regard. So thank you very much to all of you for the work that you do for all. Are you able to hear me, Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, they want to take some pictures?
I think we got them already.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next item is a presentation of a proclamation recognizing Mr. Roland Gardner for his service to the Beaufort, Jasper, Hampton Comprehensive Health Services. Joe, I don't have that item on my agenda. Yes. Audra, I'm going to step down. Take my glasses so I can read. The proclamation reads.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Whereas Beaufort County Council would like to recognize Mr. Roland Gardner for his services to the Beaufort County through his leadership at Beaufort-Jasper-Hampton Comprehensive Health Services. And whereas Mr. Roland Gardner has served Beaufort-Jasper-Hampton Comprehensive Health Services for 48 years. He started when he was five. Seven years as the Director of Mental Health and Social Services and 41 years as the Chief Executive Officer. And whereas Mr. Roland Gardner has dedicated his life to improving the lives of low-country residents through increased access to quality health care and has long been integral in speaking up for the uninsured, isolated, and medically vulnerable. And whereas under Mr. Roland Gardner's leadership, Beaufort-Jasper-Hampton Comprehensive Health Services grew from a startup nonprofit into a multimillion-dollar corporation that spans over three counties and serves over 17,000 patients. And whereas Mr. Roland Gardner and Beaufort-Jasper-Hampton Comprehensive Health Services have supported and committed providers to the Beaufort County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Department and have worked closely with the Human Services Department. And whereas Mr. Roland Gardner and the Beaufort-Jasper-Hampton Comprehensive Health Services has served as a critical partner in many Together for Beaufort County coalitions. And whereas Beaufort-Jasper-Hampton Comprehensive Health Services was a leading partner in the development of Access Health Low Country, a Duke-funded initiative to improve medical care for the uninsured residents. And whereas Beaufort-Jasper-Hampton Comprehensive Health Services supported Together for Beaufort County's efforts to improve health outcomes for mothers and children by improving prenatal care rates and played a vital role in reaching out to the underserved Latino populations. And whereas Beaufort-Jasper-Hampton Comprehensive Health Services provides critical support for the Beaufort County Early Childhood Coalition in meeting the needs of children birth to five and their families, improving health and educational outcomes, and helped build a strong foundation for the success for low-country children. And now therefore be it resolved by the County Council, Beaufort County. The council hereby wishes to honor Mr. Roland Gardner for his achievements, success, and leadership dated this date of 9/5/2022. Signed by myself, Chairman of County Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I won't be as long as you. Thank you, York. A wife of 47 years, 49 weeks, two hours. We have our 48 had a rich read versus June. County, thank you. My board members are here. My staff members are here. Can you all stand for a second? Our board and staff. They make my job easy. I've done it for, as you said, for 41 years. But being home has made a difference. Coming back, I'm from St. Helena Island. Tom Bama brought me back here after grad school. Had a lot of support, not only from what you just talked about, what I'm doing now, but every agency in Beaufort County and Jasper-Hampton that have asked for assistance for in trying to make life better for Beaufort County. They did it for us. What has been a big plus for me is what we have done as far as changing what Beaufort County was 50 years ago. Most of you who were not here back then know that Beaufort County had one of the worst infant mortality rates in the state, at 28.9 live births per 1,000. Jasper County had 48. Now Beaufort County is close to nine, and Jasper is less than 10. But those things have changed over the years because of not what we have done, but the assistance I've gotten from county council, U.S. Public Health Services, the South Carolina Primary Healthcare Association. And this has permitted me over the last 41 years to serve as the President of the National Social Community Health Centers, which now is serving more than 32 million clients across this country. We're now serving more than 1,200 health centers with directors. But when Beaufort-Jasper started, Beaufort County was one of the first. It was Beaufort, Jasper, Collison, and Charleston. And what we did was just have three health centers in those three counties. The growth of which you have assisted us with is now a community health center in every county in South Carolina. We're now serving over 400,000 South Carolinians. In addition to that, what I'm very proud of is what Beaufort County has become. When we started, we had one of the worst infant fatalities. And now today, for the sixth straight year, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation has named Beaufort County as the healthiest county in South Carolina. I've helped you all, but you have helped me also. But thank you very much.
Next on our list are our citizen comments, and we do have some individuals. Would you please step forward as your name is called? You'll have three minutes to address county council. The first one is Inez Miller.
Members of council, my name is Inez Miller. I'm a resident of St. Helena Island. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm heading night with some of my younger seniors, younger than I am, that are here from the St. Helena Senior Center. And I'm asking you to consider not putting us on the PALS or Love House Christian Center, Love House Center, because we'd like to stay. We were at Beaufort-Jasper Comprehensive Clinic on St. Helena. The senior center's a part of that building, and we would like to remain the way we are and not be put on the PALS. PALS is not good for the residents of St. Helena in keeping up their buildings, particularly Gloria Pot Center. I'm a pole worker there. That's the only time that center seems to operate. I can't even wash my hands there because the stench that comes from the water. They get a report on this, I think, for the past seven years, facilities maintenance, nothing has been done, along with other things. I also ask that if you have any monies to give the community, that you please consider the seniors at St. Helena Center or seniors everywhere. Please consider us KAZAC monies, whatever monies. Please consider giving us some of those funds. And please, again, do not allow parks and leisure to take over our senior center or Love House Ministries. And try to upgrade our centers to where they are nice, beautiful buildings like they have over in Bluffton and Hilton Head. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Anita Prather or Prather.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Just want to make it official that the Gullah, the original Gullah Festival of South Carolina is returning after a two-year hiatus from COVID. We've been working hard to make sure that it's a festival that's inclusive of all of our citizens as well as our visitors. So this year, the fencing is coming down. Hallelujah. Glad about that. But just to let you know, inflation is going up. So, but we want to make sure that everybody knows that they're invited to come. It's Memorial Day weekend, Decoration Day. That was the original festival that began the Gullah Festival. And so we want to make sure that you come out, support it. It starts on May 27th through the 29th. Don't forget, the parade is back this year on that Monday, and military services in the cemetery. But again, we want to make sure that you get the word out to everybody, that everybody is welcome to come. We're looking for volunteers. We're looking for sponsorship. We're looking for sponsorship. We're looking for sponsorship. But anyway, God bless. Thank you all for your service. Get the word out. Please pass it. Send it on all your social media. Tell folks, come on to Beaufort, South Carolina, because this is the place to be for Memorial Day weekend, Decoration Day. God bless. Thank you.
Before you leave.
Yes, sir.
Before you leave.
You'll give us 100,000, that's right. Yes, sir.
Would love for you to, this big comment about Sierra Leone.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. We had the opportunity, the Gullah Traveling Theater, to be invited by the mayor of Free Town in 2019 to come and be part of their celebration over there. And we met some wonderful young people that were college students who had completed three years in tourism. They're going to be the first graduating class of tourism majors. And just, I mean, fell in love with them. They were our interns and our guides as part of the 10 days that we were over there. We've been trying to get them here since 2020 before we knew COVID. Well, COVID came, and that kind of put a stop on everything. But we've been back and forth with Dr. Panu at USCB about getting them here to finish up their tourism program and to really work on that international tourism between Sierra Leone, West Africa, the Barbados and the West Indies, Trinidad, and Nova Scotia, and Beaufort, South Carolina. So we're finally getting them here after a lot of prayer and some more prayer and some more prayer. They will be here on May 26th, and they will be our guests until June the 9th. And so we want Beaufort, that you all will give them the key to the county, to the city, and just open your arms, because they were so welcoming to us over there, and they're looking forward to us bringing others to Sierra Leone, and they're coming. And so this is going to be a great stepping stone for us. I've never seen young people so excited about learning about what happened to us, their education. A lot of them, sometimes we talk about candlelights and lanterns, but that's what they literally study from. Even when COVID set in, they went online and started finding classes and modules that they're not going to even get grades for. That's just how hungry they are about this history. And so I think it'll be a great inspiration for our young people who take so much for granted here, to hear the stories of young people who survived the Civil War over there and still have this thirst for learning, thirst for heritage, and such a pride in it. So please, come out and meet our young people. God bless. Thank you.
Next is Jay Edward Allen.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of council. First, I'm going to deviate a little bit. I would like, we just recognized Mr. Wash, I mean, just recognized Roland Gardner. But I would be remiss, as chairman of the board for Beaufort-Jasper-Hampton Comprehensive Health, if I don't introduce our new executive officer, Dr. Faith Pokey. She looks a whole lot better than Roland. And she is a low-country girl from Charleston. So she's at home. But my reason for appearing before you is that when we look around, obviously y'all can tell I'm gray-haired and I'm old, looking at the, I'm not going to say that. There are a few people up there that look a little bit like me. But the first person came up was talking about the Senior Citizen Center at the Leroy Brown on St. Helena Island, and the importance of that center to our seniors. My 95-year-old mother was attending that. And when we had to shut the center down because of COVID, I saw what it did in terms of the decline in her mental status. And a lot of that was because of the lack of socialization that we had at that center. Please try your level best to keep that facility open. Continue the bond that you have with Beaufort-Jasper-Hampton Comprehensive Health in utilizing that facility for those members of our society that need that and need that socialization. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker is Mitch Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Passment, council members, staff, those of us present and also participating virtually. I'm Mitch Mitchell, City Councilman-at-Large, City of Beaufort. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of the reading, or the naming of the Charles Lynn Brown Community Center Pool, AKA Green Street Gym, in honor of Mr. Alvin Settles. While there's much I could say about Mr. Settles, I did read the resolution that was shared with me by Mr. Chuck Atkinson, and I think that covers it very adequately and beautifully. So I'll save the reading of that for later when it comes up. I wish to thank the county administrator and his assistant, Chuck Atkinson, for fast-tracking this. I think it was fast-tracked. Maybe it was just normal business here at the county. But in any event, we had a conversation about a month and a half ago, and I asked Mr. Greenway and Mr. Atkinson to move this forward. I did not know the process. He shared it with me. So at this time, I'd also like to thank the Community Services Committee for recommending, what I understand was unanimously, that this come before you. So what I'd like to ask you this evening is that you do the same, that you approve it unanimously. Mr. Settles was a, was born in Aiken, South Carolina, but he's a true Beaufortonian. He spent 30-plus years teaching in the DoD School System at Lower Bay. But more importantly, and why I'm here before you this evening, is that he spent the rest of his time in the pool teaching the lifesaving skill and the fun-loving skill of swimming. So much of that time that he spent in the pool was obviously taken away from his lovely wife, Gloria, sitting right here behind me. So I hope that we don't disappoint her. I spoke with her this morning, and she was very excited about that, very thankful for the way the process has been moving forward. I think this will be an easy one. So again, I ask your unanimous approval. I think maybe after the resolution that Settles, maybe her daughter would like to make comments, and my senior mom, don't tell me, I'm right here. Kristen may want to come up and make remarks. So again, I thank you very much for allowing my, this opportunity for me to speak to this group. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on to the committee reports. Any member of council wish to talk about their committees?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McKellen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to make a brief statement. We had a presentation at the Community Services from the new manager of Hunting Island State Park. It was a very informative and descriptive discussion of what's happening out there. And I think that everyone who is interested in going to that state park would be happy to hear the report, and it may serve as an invitation to others who hadn't even, had not even considered going there. So I asked the Public Information Officer for the county to prepare the press release, which I saw that he did, and it was distributed. And we also asked the county channel to videotape the presentation. So if any members of council who were not at the Community Services meeting or anyone in the audience tonight here at the council chambers or the television audience who wish to see that presentation on the great improvements that have occurred in Hunting Island State Park, you can go to the county channel, and you will find that video in the archives. I've encouraged you to have a look at it. It's extremely informative and give you a good idea of what you can expect to have happen out there during the summer. to have happened out there during the summer season. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Howard.
Yes, sir. I attended the Town of Port Royal's budget workshop and their workshop last Wednesday. They are looking at a 5.9 COLA for their employees for next year. Also, the sands boat landing, the parking area is being restripped. It'll probably be done maybe by Thursday. And also, I'd like to share with the public that the sands will remain open. There is some discussion about who owns the boat landing itself, but that is going to be worked out. And we met today, actually, with the parties involved, and we're working on getting that solved. But the sands will be maintained, and we'll be open until, as long as, as long as necessary, until we get all the intergovernmental agreements done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rodman.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Public Facilities, a week from today, we will be receiving a presentation on the, from the Citizens Committee on the possibility of the One Penny Transportation Referendum. Probably around 4:00, it's tentatively scheduled for that. So I think that'll be important and of interest to a lot of people. So we look forward to everybody tuning in.
Thank you. Mr. Lawson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee will meet before Public Facilities next Tuesday, next Monday at 2:00. We'll have our normal presentations, and I think the Sheriff's Department is presenting at that time, which everyone likes to see that, as we get closer to our fiscal year '23 approved budget.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, we're now ready to move to the public hearings and action items. As we discussed, we are rearranging the agenda. So we're going to take up item number 17. So I would ask a member of council for a motion to approve of a resolution to name the Lynn Brown Recreation Center Outdoor Pool in honor of Mr. Alvin Settles.
Mr. Chairman, I'm proud to make that motion. Thank you very much.
Mr. McCollum.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved unanimously without objection, and there are no objections. Congratulations. Mrs. Settle, did you want to say something?
Yes, sir, please.
Please come forward.
All council members and everyone else who's here, but particularly those who have worked on this, it means so much to me. But I cannot say it's just me. My, my daughter's here. But so many of the people who have supported Alvin throughout the years, who have gone there with their children or have taken classes themselves are here as well. He has been in the pool more than anything else. He loved it. Even though he had a job that he loved, I think if someone was, he could work year-round at the pool with the children and, and the, and the whole community, he would have done that, because that was his heart. He loved it from the beginning. Before, before we got married, he was talking about swimming. And he also loved swimming himself, and he wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to learn how to swim, both children and adults. So just having this done is just wonderful. He, I know he, he loves to sing, and he loves to talk. I know he's just, just really joyful today for this happening. So I just really wanted to thank you all. I want to thank the councilman here, but also all of you and anyone else who had anything to do with this, because it is a real, real blessing. But I am so, so, so happy about it. And I thank all the people of Beaufort County and whoever you brought to the pool when he was there working, because it was all fun for him. So thank you very much. I appreciate the work done, because now everybody will know of my husband, Alvin Settles. And it was a year in April that he passed. So in case somebody didn't want to know where he is, if you did not know him before. But he is even more happier now, because I am as well. Thank you very much.
Next, Honored.
Mr. Chairman, there are, thank you.
Hold on a second, Mr. Somerville.
I'll follow Mr. Somerville.
Go ahead, Mr. Somerville.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's going to be very brief. I just want to say that I don't know how many of you have ever tried to teach your children how to swim. I did. And I was a miserable failure. I was a lifeguard. I'm a pretty good swimmer, but that didn't seem to matter. I was a miserable failure teaching my children. So somebody introduced me to Alvin Settles, and he was a godsend. He taught both of my daughters to swim. One of them went on to be a lifeguard for two years, and both of them swim like porpoises. And so I just want to say thank you. He was a great man. He was a great teacher. Thank you.
Where he had his children, Alvin actually had my grandkids and my nephew, and they are true swimmers today because of him. So I just want to publicly say thank you and thank you to your daughter, Kristen, as well.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dawson.
Ms. Settles, we thank you for the time, the service, the love that Alvin showed to the Beaufort City community. We thank you for the time that he spent away from you and his dedication to the community, to children in general. And, and I just regret that we didn't give him some recognition before he expired. But on his, on behalf of council, we say thank you for your belated husband, Alvin. Thank you. God bless you.
Okay. Item number 11 is the approval of our consent agenda. I would ask a member of council to make a motion for approval of the four items coming from Community Services and Public Safety, the Executive Committee, and the Natural Resources Committee.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman makes the motion. A second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda? I see no discussion. Therefore, the consent agenda will be approved without objection, and there are no objections. Item number 12 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance to allocate 2018 One-Cent Sales Tax Additional Revenue to the Sidewalks and Multi-Use Pathways Program in the amount of $15,449,734.75. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion. Mr. Cunningham made the second. Before I go to council, is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Are there any comments by any member of council? Mr. Rodman.
Yes. It's, the history of the pathways is that we put an item on the last referendum, and it was in the amount of $10 million. And we had listed on there a series of projects to draw from, and the number of projects that were listed was much greater than the $10 million that was available. So I've been a strong and early proponent that if we added extra money, we should certainly use that for the pathways. However, I'm, I'm not convinced that we should take all of the $16 million and increase the $10 million from, to $26 million. And I'd asked at the last meeting that we get an update on what monies might be required for the Ladies Island part of the project, which we know does not have enough money, and certainly the corridor project. I don't know if that's available, but if it's not, perhaps we could take that up at Public Facilities next Monday and get an overview of that. So not, don't want to hold it up, but I do think that, I'm not convinced that we should put 100% of the money into pathways.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCollum.
Mr. Rodman, did you indicate it was $10 million plus $16 million, so total of $26?
Yes, that's correct. Be correct.
The original amount of money in the sales tax referendum back in 2018 was $10 million for the pathways. It wasn't nearly enough. This will be an additional $15.5 million towards the completion of the remaining projects that were on that list. Does that answer your question, Mr. McCollum?
Is any of that money being made available for the corridor project with regard to the building the Stony area and making it, making it a better?
No. No. The Stony project is a part and parcel of the bridge project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we need a roll call vote, or are you going? Okay. So then this will be approved by unanimous vote. And I see no objections. Therefore, the item number 12 is approved as written. Item number 13, I ask a member to make a motion for the first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code, Sections in Division 3.2 and Sections in Division 3.3, to correct and clarify parking space requirement conflicts between zoning districts and the parking space requirements table in Section 5.5 dot 4.0 point B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. A second, please. Mr. Rodman makes the second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the first reading will be approved unanimously without objection, and I see no objections. Item 14, ask a member to approve a first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code, Appendix A dot 13 dot 50 dot D, to clarify the standards for minimum lot size requirements for guest houses located in the May River Community Preservation District.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. A second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Lawson makes the second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Rob is here, so I, I was reading through some of it, and I ran across south, south of, I don't have it with me. I left at home a copy of it, but south of a highway of some sort. And my question is, why south of that highway? No, if, if, and I may be, I hope I'm speaking to the right.
Yes.
Code at this time.
Yeah, it has to do with the May River Community Preservation Area. And that was a, that came out of our community preservation program. So the community along the May River Corridor came up with standards. And one of the things that they chose to do is to have, there's some different standards that apply to south of Highway 46 or May River Road, because that area is closer to the May River, and they wanted to protect the, the water. So there's a, there's a lower density there than north of May River.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Merchant. Any further discussion? This item will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 15 is a first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code, Section 6 dot 1 dot 40 dot G, to clarify that both jurisdictional and non-jurisdictional wetlands must be subtracted from the gross site area to determine base site area for development. A motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. A second, please.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and there are no objections. Item number 16 is a first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code, Section 5 dot 11 dot 100 dot F dot 1, to close a loophole which allows specimen and mitigation trees to be removed post-construction of single-family homes.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Howard makes the motion.
Second it.
Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Any discussion?
I have one discussion, not a motion itself, so, but it does have to do with specimen trees. And I would just love for staff to, to look at the pine species as specimen trees. And the reason I'm saying that is because, you know, oak trees, when they get, you know, 30-inch in diameter, they're going to be here three, four, five, six, maybe 1,000 years. But pine trees has maturity. And once they reach that maturity, they really should be removed. And I just wonder why we keep putting pine trees on that specimen tree. Maple trees and other trees are one thing, but pine trees, even, even, um, bald cypress, you know, will be around for a while. But pine trees, once they reach a maturity, that's, that's the life of that pine tree, I think. And, you know, they need to come down. So I just wanted them to look at that as, and they can talk to some foresters and other folks and stuff, to see whether they should have some kind of guidelines on pine trees.
Can I make a comment? I, I don't disagree with you, but I do disagree about which type of pine trees, because longleaf pine have at least 100-year lifespan, and they're very important to endangered species such as the red cocated woodpecker. But I think it'd be a great thing to bring up at Natural Resource Committee. We, maybe we can look at specific species.
I agree. Joe just, well, we'll work with the, we'll work with the State Forestry Commission and Amanda Flank and have a report back to you. I agree with you. Mr. Lawson.
And just to piggyback, I wasn't going to bring it up. I'm glad you did, York, because, yeah, that's what caused all the damage during Hurricane Matthew, was all the lob-lolly pines that came down. Wasn't the, wasn't the rain, wasn't the winds. It was the trees. And my backyard is a perfect example. I lived in the same neighborhood for 26 years now. The little tree that was this big around 26 years ago now is a specimen tree, and it's not getting any bigger. And I guarantee you, it's going to come down on my house the next hurricane. So I agree with the, and I, I agree with the pine tree. And I also agree with the long leaf pine as well. But yeah, that's what caused us all the damage in Hurricane Matthew, was pine trees coming down.
Okay. Any other discussion? So this will be approved on first reading without objection, but we will get some more updates as we move along before we have the final reading of the ordinance. There are no objections, so item number 16 is approved at first reading. Our final item is approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents and fund the purchase of real property consisting of approximately 2.1 acres owned by the Technical College of the Lowcountry. May I have such a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion, and Ms. Howard makes the second. Are there any discussion?
Yeah, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
That's why I put it on, so I could see you, Mr. Flueeling.
Thank you. I, I, I'm conflicted about this, because I certainly understand that, that the media has been pointing up a shortage of housing in, in, in Beaufort County. And there may very well be clues to that. I think we have some documentary evidence and outside counsel saying that, that we have such a problem. I'm, I'm worried about the effect of Beaufort County being involved in what is essentially an, an exercise in free markets. And I think that our heavy hand, the, the power of Beaufort County purse would really get in the way of private investment. And I think when we, when we use government funds and remove private investment, we remove the opportunity for individual people to, to, you know, our citizens, our actual paying, tax-paying citizens, making the kind of money that's necessary to improve their lives. I'm going to vote against this just on principle. I don't like the government competing with private citizens. And I think it's just, it's wrong. And so I'm going to vote against this. Please count me as a no. But other than that, you can go ahead.
Any other questions? Mr. Lawson, and then Mr. Cunningham.
Yes, I voted against this last time. I will, I will vote for it this time. I still think this might not be the best place for affordable housing, even if it gets upzoned to the IC zoning that only allows to have 20 units total at, at 10 per acre.
upzoned to the IC zoning, that only allows to have 20 units total at 10 per acre, which I think we'd have a difficult time doing that. You take the purchase price of 600,000 per acre, that really adds a lot to the cost. But I think the property is worth that amount, and if we can find a way to do affordable housing, I think that's great. If we can't, I know that the property will be, will find a useful use for it at some other point.
Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is one of the things that council's been talking about for years now, and I feel like we're starting to make some progress in it, starting to feel like, what direction do we want to take? The goal is to make some form of this to be used for affordable housing. Doesn't mean we're going to develop this property ourselves. It doesn't mean we're not going to sell it to, put it out to bid, to sell it for a company to put affordable housing in there. A lot of discussions we've had on county councils, what type of affordable housing options we're looking for. Me personally, I look for something that is either a mix of whether it's rental and lease-to-own homes, or lower income for purchasing, for workforce housing, because my goal behind it isn't necessarily for somebody to move there and stay. It is more to move there, better your life, and move on to the next level. And the reason I go into purchasing is because right now, this is a prime market of that. You have a lot of people that purchased homes years ago, and they're getting their investments back and flipping over to another piece of property and taking advantage of that market. When you go into rental property, you don't get to capitalize on that. So, I want to be able to create that opportunity for people in Beaufort County. We know we need forms of workforce housing. I have tons of employees right now that are, they room together, or they're still living at home for this reason right here. So, this is something that we need to start, you know, chipping away at. You've heard me stand, stand up here before and say that I'm against rezoning for big apartment complexes, because I think we're going to be chasing the tail again in five years. Every time those agreements are up, the rent goes right back up, and we do it over again, and investing that money over again and just chasing the tail. I think this is a good start for us to be able to, you know, lock down the property and put it out for bid possibly in the future, to see what's the best outcome for all of Beaufort County. We have a lot of schools, we have a lot of people that work for Beaufort County, our hospitals, that this is prime location for something along those lines.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make a statement? Mr. Glover.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'm going to support this motion, and the reason being is that Beaufort County has really created a monster in the housing market over the years, and I can tell you that if I didn't build my house in the 70s, I don't think I could afford to build a house today because of this market. Sometimes the government needs to really step in to assist in that. And if we go on to continue to grow in Beaufort County, we cannot bring folks in from Hampton County and Collison County to work here. We got to also combat that with help and assistance in affordable housing. So, that's why I'm going to support this motion here, because I think we need to commit ourselves and put our, as old folks used to say, the money where our mouth is, and that's what I'm hoping that we're doing right here, to make it available for some affordable use. Thank you.
Mr. Rodman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In general, I agree with Brian that this is not what we should be in, but I think we have an indication here that this could be channeled to workforce housing for the hospital, given where they, where it's located, so I am in favor of it. However, under the theory, if it walks like a duck and it looks like it, and quacks like a duck, it just may be one, we're appropriating money here. I believe it requires three readings and a public hearing.
Is that a motion?
No, I don't believe you can do this.
It's a requirement, yeah. It's not a motion, it's a requirement.
Yes, it's a requirement.
You are, you, you have already appropriated the money through the necessary readings through a budget amendment.
Yes.
We are bringing this back as just a safeguard move to allow you all to approve the resolution for us to actually go ahead for the purchase of the property, which is what we typically do with purchase of property.
Was this identified by, for these five sites in appropriation? Do I stand corrected, then, if we?
We've, we've discussed this, this purchase several times.
So, but these three properties were three readings and a public hearing?
Yeah, the money, the money.
Not the money, but whether these were specifically?
I'm going to let Kurt and Brittany Ward weigh in on that. They got more experience with this than I, but this is the process that the legal department advised me that we needed to follow. So, Brittany, you want to take that?
Apparently not.
Scared her away. Thank you, Brittany.
Okay, my apologies. The ordinance was passed with a budget amendment for the allocation of the funds, which is the ordinance section of having purchased the property. The state code requires a public hearing, therefore, this resolution thing brought in front of you today for the administrator to have the authority to sign the documents. As I stated, the funds have already been appropriated the right way through the three readings in the ordinance, and the public hearing will be held as well.
Okay. I have one last comment. As most people know how I stand about affordable housing and hopefully the establishment of an affordable housing trust fund for our county in Jasper, this site is in my district, and also, this was TCL property, it had to be sold to local governments, so there was not an opportunity for it to be sold on the open market. I think this, as Councilman Cunningham said, it's a unique opportunity where we might be able to do something with a lease-to-own, and it's in a part of the city of Beaufort that lends itself to being able to do things like walk to work and other, or ride your bike to work, or other methods of being in an urban environment, which is another good thing for workforce housing.
Thank you. Mr. Hervishon.
Thank you. Just have a question and a comment, just so I'm 100% clear to Mr. Rodman's point. This will be the fourth time that we vote on this with these properties specifically identified?
They were identified through an ordinance for the budget amendment, and it was for property acquisition.
I'm not going to say it was the fourth time, because I think we added these after first reading to the budget amendment process. So, this would be probably, it would be, it would be like the third time that you've seen it and you saw it in executive session as well.
Okay, appreciate that. My comment would just be, I voted against this the whole way through, and we continue to vote against this. I don't believe that this is an appropriate use of government funds. I don't think that we should be staking ourselves in the middle of what I view to be a private enterprise-type responsibility, so for those reasons, I'm going to vote against it.
Okay. Who hasn't spoken yet? Mr. Flouelling, your comment?
Thanks. Not a comment, actually a question. I'm wondering, as I drive by this property, and I do, and I have often over the years, it's been rented, these various properties are rented out to individual people. What's going to happen to those people and the rent that they're paying? Or have they been empty for some short period of time?
Yeah, I believe they're vacant.
They've been vacant since December.
December?
But we, we can, we can, you know, make sure that we do, once the purchase goes through, we can make sure that we do necessary work, and there's no reason for us to let the houses sit there vacant. We can, we can rent them out until we figure out the plan for, for what we're going to do with them as well, working with the, we're currently discussing options with the housing authority and looking at, and exploring other options that we'll bring back to you all in more detail down the road.
Wow, all right, thank you.
Okay, let's, we'll call the roll. Mr. Chairman. Yes? Yes? Okay. I'm still confused about what Brittany said, whether we do or don't have to have a public hearing. And I'm also, it's not clear to me that we did an appropriation that specifically mentioned these properties, which I would guess that we have to do. If I stand corrected, if these properties were listed, but I sure don't remember it.
Yes, the ordinance did list on the budget amendment ordinance that was approved, I believe at the last conference hearing, our meeting, that it states specifically the five properties.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Yeah, that was done on April, I think April 18th.
Okay.
Yes, there it is.
Mr. Cunningham, you made the motion, you get to vote first.
I'll start you off with a yes, Mr. Chairman. Hold on, as I'm reading that, it doesn't specifically identify the properties. That is not sufficient as an identification adjacent to TCL and Reba Road. That's not specifically identifying property that the county is intending to purchase. This is insufficient to its purpose, this, this thing we're doing now.
It was well-defined when we discussed it.
Yeah, you know, you discuss it, it's got to be published. It's got to be public. This is, this is really nebulous and undefined.
No. So, here's the thing, I mean, you know, we've, we've did numerous presentations of these five properties. We even showed pictures of these properties to you all. We put the amount in the budget amendment, which is what we had to do. The resolution, I haven't seen the resolution, but I'm sure the resolution, since it was done by our legal department, does the appropriate identification of what you're authorizing me to purchase. If I'm incorrect about that, then we will, we can go back and, and bring it back and redo it to get you the detail that you need, so that you all can vote on it and feel comfortable with it.
Well, if I, if I might argue, contrary opinion, Mr. Chairman, it's, the purpose of what we've done before is to make the funds available. It was like a, that money, that 1.2 million dollars or 1.12 million dollars, or 2.15 dollars that we have, was not available in the budget. Now, when you purchase, when we purchase a piece of property, we're required to name the property and identify the source of funds. And so, you know, that the funds are available doesn't mean that's necessarily the source of funds. The purpose of this whole exercise is to name the property and identify the source of funds, which we have not done sufficiently in three readings and a public hearing. That's all there is. And I may be wrong, as Stu Rodman likes to say, I may be wrong, and I'll stand corrected.
Okay. All right, we, we have a motion and second on the floor. We will be taking action, seeing no further comments.
So, so you're saying that you're, you're overruling our objections, are they here? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you've overruled our, my objection and Stu's?
Yes.
I think I need to get a legal opinion here from, from one of the county attorneys about what's going on here. I'd like for somebody to say emphatically from the legal department that what we're doing is legal and that there are no issues.
Mr. Taylor?
Kurt, you want to answer that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I state emphatically that what we're doing is legal and it's a legal test that it might come their way.
Okay. He said he, he's declaring emphatically that what, what we've done is legal.
What was after that?
Kurt, can you state it again, please? It seemed like you were muffled. Mr. Taylor? Okay.
All right. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just need to plug in my headphones. As Mr. Greenway requested, I am stating emphatically that what we are doing is legal and it is proper, and you have properly identified the funding source and the properties to be purchased.
Thank you. Mr. Cunningham, you made the motion, you get to vote first.
I will start you off with a yes, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard, you made the second. Mr. Somerville? You're on mute. You're still on mute.
I don't think he heard you, Joe.
I'll come back to him. Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Hervishon?
No.
Mr. Rodman?
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flouelling? Mr. Somerville?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so we have nine yes and two no. That motion passes. We are at the second citizens' comments. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to make a comment? Seeing none.
Before you, before you get ready to adjourn, right?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't know, just looking at the budget numbers that were sent out by P G, and the coroner is, woo, we're going to get a, a hearing from the coroner's office?
I'm trying to think if they're coming Monday or not. I'll find out if we can, we'll get them there.
Yeah, I just want to know why the increase is.
I can answer that.
Okay, go ahead.
We, we added a pathologist to the coroner's office to fulfill a facility that he's had in the coroner's office for about seven years that has gone unused. It will ultimately result, we feel like, in a cost savings, particularly to our citizens of the county, because autopsies, autopsies can be performed much quicker locally here instead of the bodies having to be shipped off to M U S C and the, the work done there, and then reports coming back.
Towards the cost of setting that whole up, I mean, that whole?
Hiring the pathologist, yes, sir. And I can send you all, I will send you all a detailed synopsis that goes through the cost savings that will likely be incurred as a result of this, so we'll explain it in more detail.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Okay.
If I, if I made one particular thing, because folks were here tonight to talk about the senior programming at Beaufort Comp Health Building, we have no plans to depart and not offer senior programming at that facility. We are going to budget the funds necessary to rent the building where the senior programming is currently occurring there with Beaufort Jasper Comp Health, and we're providing the funding for the supplies, so that there will be no disruption in the senior programming at that facility by the St. Helena Library in the Beaufort Jasper Comp Health Building.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Greenway.
Okay, there being no further action, the county council meeting of this evening is adjourned at 7:22.